Welcome, welcome everyone. The League of Women Voters of Piedmont would like to welcome you all to tonight's voter forum featuring candidates for the Piedmont City Council race. I'm Kathleen Chaw, a member of the Oakland League and immediate past president of the League of Women Voters Bay Area. I will serve as your moderator for this league-sponsored Piedmont City Council candidate forum. The League of Women Voters is a trusted organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in issue advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues or ballot measures. This forum is presented by the Education Arm of the League and which does not take positions or advocate for them. Today's event is an educational forum, not a debate. Here's a little background information about the city council positions. The Piedmont City Council Charter has established a city council, city administrator form of government. Under this form of government, the Piedmont City Council is the legislative body responsible for setting city policy. The five council members are elected at large by the Piedmont electorate, and the Piedmont City Council members are elected volunteers who serve their community without compensation. Piedmont holds staggered elections for the four-year terms. This year, there are two opening city council positions, which means that you, as a voter, can cast your ballot for two of the four candidates running. I will have more information about when and where to cast your ballot at the end of tonight's program. So let me introduce and welcome the four candidates. For Piedmont City Council, we have Connor McCarthy, James Green, Laurel Pigny, and we have the fourth candidate, who has been Sunny Bostrom Fleming. She's not participating. It was a last-minute, unable to participate, and as a result, her ground rules, she submitted an opening statement to be read by the moderator, by myself, at the appropriate time. So you are here today to make smart choices when you vote. It is important that we help you make that smart vote by using a few simple rules for a fair and balanced process, and that's what you're going to see. It's important for the League to give the community a voice, which is why we invited the community to send us questions for the candidates in advance. These questions have been sorted by a team of lead viewers to avoid duplicate questions and to select those questions that are most important to the community. You will not be taking questions during this forum. You'll notice that the Q&amp;A and chat features have been turned off to minimize distraction. Microphones are needed for everyone during this forum. You'll notice that, except for, of course, the candidates and the moderator. Video images will show the candidates and myself as your moderator. We are recording this forum and will be posting it via the League of Women Voters of Piedmont YouTube channel and website. This forum is also being recorded by KCOM, and it will be available on the city's website at Piedmont.City. I don't know if you've heard about that leader. Today's candidate forum will proceed as follows. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. And to keep the discussion flowing, candidates will then have a session of seven questions, and candidates will be expected to keep the answers to the questions to one and a half minutes. These will be timed, and the timer clock can be seen by everyone. Viewers can minimize the timer clock by using the grab bar in the middle between the left and right sides of the screen to give you a clearer picture on speakers. We will switch up, and just to let you know, in order to be fair, if a candidate runs over, I will need to cut them off, let him finish his sentence. While time is limited, so we want to make sure that all candidates have an equal amount of time and that we can cover a full range of questions. We'll switch the order of candidates speaking so that each candidate has a chance to answer first. Earlier, I randomly selected the order that the candidates will be answering the question, and it's left behind about the process. At the end of the Q&amp;A session, each candidate will then have one minute to provide a closing statement. That's the rule of things. Let's begin now with the candidates' opening statements, beginning with Connor McCarthy.
Thank you, Kathleen, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for all the work you do to support our American democracy. My name is Connor McCarthy. I grew up a true-blue San Franciscan, but 35 years ago, my husband Peter and I made the best decision. We made Piedmont our home. My three children are graduates of Piedmont schools, and I hope, when they're ready, my adult children will choose Piedmont as their home, too. During my 35 years in Piedmont, I've spent 30 years volunteering. I led parcel tax campaigns for both the city and the school district. I've served on parent boards for Beach School, Piedmont Middle School, and Piedmont High School. I served on boosters boards. I was on the Wellness Center Steering Committee, and I served six years on the Piedmont Educational Foundation. Before seeking a council position, I prepared myself for city governance. I earned an appointment to the Recreation Commission and became vice chair. I also earned an appointment to the Budget Advisory and Financial Planning Committee. As a member of council for the past four years, I participated in ongoing discussions and decisions regarding enhanced public safety, improvements to aging infrastructure, fiscal oversight, state housing mandates, climate action goals, pool construction, and eliminating systemic causes of racial disparity. I am running for reelection because I have the ability and the experience to lead Piedmont through critical planning and management with an understanding of the increased demands on our limited resources. I have served as city liaison to the Piedmont Planning Commission, to the Piedmont Park Commission, to the Public Safety Committee, and the Civil Service Commission. I served on the Board of AVA, once called East Bay Community Energy, and I am the voting delegate to the League of California Cities. I am grateful for the opportunity to join all candidates and speak to Piedmonters about issues of concern this evening. Thank you.
James Green, you are next.
Thank you, Kathleen, and thanks to the League of Women Voters. Thanks to the candidates here, and then thanks to the candidates who are running for school board, all of whom are trying to help support Piedmont, the city that we call home. For three decades, I have had the opportunity to work in government affairs, addressing some of the most challenging policy and management issues of the age. During my career, I have had the most proud moments working 17 years in the federal government in Washington DC and at our US Embassy in Beijing, China. Never as a political appointee, working under both Democratic and Republican administrations. My firm belief that my experience in the White House, the State Department, and other agencies advising cabinet secretaries and elected representatives on strategy and budget priorities gives me a unique set of tools to address the very real challenges Piedmont faces today. Whether families have been here for a decade or, like us, came more recently, we were all drawn to the special character that makes Piedmont unique. I look forward to the discussion today with the candidates.
Thank you, Kathleen, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and of course, for all of your work supporting voters, especially during the election season. I'm Laurel Pigny, and I am an Army veteran. I'm an attorney and a data scientist. My husband grew up in Piedmont, and we moved here ourselves 13 years ago to raise our own family. Our kids went to Wildwood Elementary and are now both in high school here in Piedmont. As a veteran, I understand what it means to serve, and I have been serving as a community volunteer in Piedmont in my kids' schools and for almost a decade with the League of Women Voters advocating for sound city policy. Part of my work with the League was in bringing people together, and this work was a catalyst for one of my main priorities for Piedmont, which is community engagement. I believe in providing as many avenues as possible for community members to connect and to meet you where you gather, in our parents' groups, our many affinity organizations, to listen and to learn what's important to you. Another priority of mine is public safety. This includes well-funded police and fire departments to respond to emergencies. It also includes the work our fire department is doing to withstand the very real threats of wildfire, floods, and earthquakes, and it includes maintenance work so our streets and sidewalks are safe for our kids to walk to and from school. I believe in building trust in our government by using sound judgment and prioritizing fiscal responsibility. One of the things I treasure most about Piedmont is the small-town feel. It's our neighbors who volunteer their time and their talents to contribute to this place that we all call home. I envision Piedmont as a warm, welcoming community for all of our residents. I look forward to your questions today.
I will now read the statement submitted by the fourth candidate, Sunny Bostrom Fleming. Here's what she submitted. She said, "My name is Sunny Bostrom Fleming. I promote safety, 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 and fiscal responsibility. Last time I ran, I alone promoted cameras at all entrances and exits to Piedmont. With license plate readers, they have helped prevent new crimes. I also ran to warn voters of a potential landslide threat to Moraga Avenue. I knew the earth likely could not support the proposed offer due because a brand-new house I had purchased next door started to slide two days before the close of S-Plan. Just days before the final decision, a landslide dumped tons of dirt onto both lanes. Regarding the new pool, I contacted four swimming pool contractors. They admitted it would cost $300,000 to $400,000 to build an Olympic-sized pool. So the $30 million we spent could have built 75 Olympic-sized pools. Drowning is the number-three cause of unintended deaths in the U.S., over 1 million people in the world drown annually. With global warming, water levels will rise. Let's get swimming lessons for everybody. No child in America died last year because they failed algebra. No family or city is immune to the generational grief that comes from violent crime. My house and guesthouse were ransacked in the biggest robbery in U.S. history. I lost a large Gutenberg Bible, and the Audubon's Bird of America was all 435 prints. This last year has been almost a 30% increase in 911 calls in Piedmont. We've had a 400% increase in rapes and a very high increase in assaults, robberies, car thefts, and burglaries. Three men with machine guns robbed Piedmont. A man threatened to shoot Chief Bowers and police with a machine gun. To further protect Piedmont Police, I propose used armored cars, which can be purchased for as little as $17,000." Sorry about that. "To be safer, we have to make life safer for every child. In Oakland, by the second grade, 80% of children are already failing reading and math. Presuming to use school progress of third graders to forecast mean. One can volunteer to tutor a seventh grader in Oakland through the school system. I would welcome the opportunity to be on the city council." Thank you. That is the statement submitted by Sunny Bostrom Fleming, who was only a participant at the last meeting. So with that, let us go to the next round of questions. We have seven questions, and all things being submitted, I will start off first with question one. What have you have been mentioning some of these already? One of the most important measures the city council can undertake to reduce crime in Piedmont? James Green, you will start this round of questions, followed by Laurel, Pigny, and then Connor McCarthy. James.
Thanks so much, Kathleen. Yeah, I think for the voters that I talk to, whether that's at my kids' baseball game or at Piedmont Middle School, I think the thing that really voters are concerned about is public safety, and the issue of what the city council can do and what the Piedmont Police Department can do is top of mind. Over the last four years, crimes that Piedmont Police have characterized have gone up sevenfold in Oakland, as well double digits in many categories of crime. I think the use of increased deployment of cameras around license plate readers are important. The Piedmont Police has made a good step in redeploying some of the resources they have on personnel to try to address the concerns of citizens. Outreach to residents is very important. I think the looking at staffing, which the Piedmont Police is already doing, to figure out what's needed going forward, also critically important. The relationship that the Piedmont Police Department has with both Oakland and the Alameda County Sheriff is important to keep our citizens safe. I think for us, ensuring that the police department has the resources that it needs to protect the cities is critically important. One of the longer-term issues is going to be what to do with the dispatch part of the Piedmont Police, which is currently sitting under Veterans Hall and needs renovation in the coming years.
Laurel, you're next.
Thank you for this question. Of course, everyone deserves to feel safe at home and when we are out and about in our community. In Piedmont, we are fortunate to have a very fast response rate to emergency calls, and this is a testament to our staffing and training. With Measure F, which our voters approved in the March election, the police department has added a second dispatcher. The city is also currently upgrading our fire and police dispatch center, and this is not just to improve the space itself, but also to make critical upgrades to the technology and to take advantage of modern advances for emergency response. As James mentioned, one of the most effective tools that we do have is the ALPRs, which are the license plate readers at the entrances and exits to our city and elsewhere throughout the city. And as an example, in 2023, there were 300 vehicles who triggered those license plate readers, and these are stolen vehicles that fled from officers, and that's 300 vehicles that could have committed crimes within the city. And because of the license plate readers and the response time of our police officers, those crimes did not happen.
Sure, thank you.
It's your turn.
Thank you so much. I think all Piedmonters were awakened to an uptick in crime that we hadn't previously had to deal with it, and a lot of that is overflow from the failed safety policies in Oakland. So about May of 2023, what was most shocking is we had two strong armed robberies right close to where I live, one on Magnolia near Oakland, excuse me, on Magnolia near El Cerrito and one on El Cerrito and Oakland Avenue. That sent shockwaves through our communities, and our residents were asking for answers. We had three public meetings at that time, one at city council, one through public safety, and a very large, well-attended public meeting we held in the community hall. Chief Bowers talked to the residents and told them about his eight-point plan to reduce crime in Piedmont. First was the fully staff, full staff and well-trained. At that time, you may recall that we had folks asking for more officers on foot. What Chief Bowers told us was what he needed was a dispatch center. Our dispatch center was not up to best practices. We have used almost $200 million, $1.9 million of our ERPA funds to revamp, redo, our dispatch center. We will have more full-time dispatchers. We will have two. We will have more people on, and that will allow us to deploy to immediate situations. So that is already taking place right now. The dispatch center is under construction.
You are over time.
Oh darn, I have so much more to say on safety. Thank you.
Feel free, everyone, in order to do your questions, and you can add it to other questions.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
So question number two, and this will, Laurel, you'll be the one, the first one answering this one. Question number two. In Moraga Canyon, how do you think evacuation plans will be affected by currently heavy traffic and plans to add sidewalks, bike paths, and significantly increased housing? Laurel, Pigny.
Can you repeat the end there? Significantly improve?
Increased housing.
Significantly increased housing. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so the Moraga Canyon-specific plan is an important step in our city's planning process. As part of our general plan, the state requires that we submit a housing element that addresses our regional housing needs, and the Moraga Canyon-specific plan is studying all of the city-owned land that's on both sides of Moraga Ave in the Moraga Canyon. This includes the existing uses, including infrastructure and traffic control. It includes pedestrian and bicycle safety, and the plan is to preserve the sports field and other recreational uses, as well as the corporation yard, although the corporation yard could potentially move to the opposite side of the street. So there are, the plan is, could have housing on either side of the street, up to 199 units, but all housing units will be on the same side of the street. And like I said, the part of the reason we do specific planning at the city level is so that we can assess our infrastructure needs. We can assess whether we need better traffic control, whether we need better options for pedestrian and bicycle safety, whether we have the infrastructure we need for sewers and for electricity and other utilities. So all of that is included in the Moraga-specific plan, which you can find at Piedmont Is Home. Thank you.
Connor McCarthy, you're next.
Thank you so much. Yes, the Moraga Canyon-specific plan is an important part of our six-cycle housing element. There are 18 acres in Moraga Canyon that can, will be part of that specific plan. We need to develop housing and community infrastructure to support that housing. City Council gave direction to our consultant, who's helping us develop that plan, that specifically said, "We want both market rate and affordable housing integrated in design. We want to accommodate families with at least two-bedroom accommodations. We want to increase units to get funding for more community amenities, and we asked for roadway improvements and recreation facility improvements." So that means, I think you asked about the roadway in your question. We want to improve bike, pedestrian, and traffic safety. We have heard in the 11 public meetings we've had on the Moraga Canyon Plan that that is essential. So we are looking very carefully and very judiciously at the safety elements with increased housing in that area.
James Green, you are next.
Thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, the Moraga Canyon-specific plan, what I think it's an elegant solution for the housing needs of the region and something that the city council has spent a lot of time going through with outside consultants and talking to the community. I think one of the more exciting parts about it is the emphasis and the ability for people to walk, and so the expanded sidewalks and bike lanes are ones that I know my kid, who walks to Coach's Field, will be able to take advantage of when he goes over that way. I think the traffic increase was maybe of concern to the residents that are there, but for the interests of the whole city, it is one that, through the Moraga Canyon-specific plan, is one that takes into consideration both the housing needs and the transportation needs of the citizens, and so it's one that we'll move forward to from the city's point of view.
Question number three. What measures and incentives could Piedmont consider to reduce water usage, reduce carbon emissions, and improve conservation? And Connor McCarthy, you begin this.
I think that goes to me. Well, we have had, for the past 15 years, we have really focused, concerted effort focused on climate action. We passed reach codes in 2021 and again in 2022 at council. In April of this year, we had a little setback with a federal lawsuit that allowed to cut back on what our requirements were, which was to require all electric appliances in new housing or in remodels over a certain size. Now, is that going to set us back a lot? It's not great, but we are focusing on electric vehicle charging stations in Piedmont. We're going to be building those up by the excedra. It's a priority for us to have electric vehicles in our safety vehicles, our pool vehicles for fire and police. And we started an electrification task force with a lot of experts from the community because our biggest source of carbon emissions are from buildings. So we're really focused on that. Now, when I go back to losing the enforcement of, we can still ask people to do upgrades in new construction, but we can't force on them a specific type of appliance. They can still, after this federal case, they can still choose gas appliances, but we can incentivize, and when people come in, am I done?
You are done.
I'm Irish. I tend to overdo. Thank you.
James Green, you're the...
Thanks, Kathleen. 40% of emissions from the city come from transportation, so electrification of the transportation network critically important, both for houses and residents as well as for city vehicles. And so that's something that is a priority of the city and will one move forward on. I think the bike and walking plan is one that will reduce the transportation emissions footprint, and it's critically important. It was super exciting to see that when the decision was made to upgrade the community pool, that that was put on electric power to reduce the town's carpet footprint and to prevent the use of natural gas. I think in terms of water usage, incentives around not watering and for new construction, ways to have residents use non-grass as the main turf are things that the city should
Then Laurel Pigny, you're the last.
Thank you. So I think Connor and James have mentioned a lot of potential solutions. The city currently has a sustainability manager, which is a relatively new position. We have made great strides in meeting our climate goals as a city. We even won an award for our efforts. However, we're still not on track to meet our climate targets that were set out in the Climate Action Plan that the council approved in 2018. So the reason we're not on track is because the city can do a lot for things the city has agency over, for our city buildings, like the pool, for the electrification of our fleet, which is a current priority, having electric city vehicles, but that's a very small percentage of the emissions and climate impact in the city. Most of the climate impact comes from our residents, so we need to be creative about incentives and solutions that will influence our residents to make decisions for their personal homes and their personal vehicles, including watering their yards, that are that are improving our climate footprint as a city as a whole, and that takes a lot of creativity. It's something that our sustainability manager is currently working on, and I would be happy to help with creative ideas.
Thank you. I tried not to cut you too far off.
Just finishing my sentence.
All right. Question number four. What lessons can we learn from the construction pool cost overrun to apply to other anticipated infrastructure projects over the next five years? And what are your ideas for how the city can pay for them? And James Green, you'll begin this round.
Thank you, Kathleen. Yeah, I think for most people in the town, the construction of the pool is something, and the finishing of the pool is something they really look forward to. It's one of the great centerpieces of life in Piedmont, and people have been waiting for quite some time to have it back online. And when I talk to voters, the delays which were caused by the once-in-a-generation pandemic, some challenges with the site and a fair amount of rain are understandable at one level, but I think as stewards of taxpayer dollars, something that the residents really are concerned about is cost overruns. And thankfully, we have such a wonderful community here in Piedmont that fundraising was able to make up that difference from the initial bond measure to supplement when the pool cost overruns, really were challenging the completion of the project. I think for planning... I think for planning, it's, it was the largest, um, project that the city had done. And so there, there won't be pla- plans perhaps that large. I think for the city council, trying to build in more of a buffer so that, the, these sorts of cost overruns can be contained. Having, uh, as much as possible, uh, local designers participate in the process is one that is, uh, important. And finally, in the end, we have to go to the voters and hope the voters will approve it. And so far, the Piedmont voters have been generous in their approval of bond measures to improve the infrastructure of our city.
Laurel Pemlee, you're next.
Thank you. Um, so we have aging infrastructure, uh, in our city center and we do have, uh, renovation projects that are looming large. Our police, uh, and fire stations both need to be retrofitted. They're not compliant with current safety standards. And I think the biggest lesson that we can learn, knowing that those projects are, are coming in the future is that, and, and anyone who's ever done home renovation pro- projects knows this to be true. When you budget for something, you, you know that you will inevitably go over your budget. You know that there will inevitably be certain aspects, uh, of the project that were completely unforeseeable. So I, I think it's important to bake those things into our budgets for, for future projects. Like James mentioned, the, with the pool, a number of the setbacks were completely unforeseeable and more expensive than, um, other, uh, unforeseeable issues might be for future projects. There were hidden tanks that created an environmental issue and it was very expensive to deal with them on that site.
Connor McCarthy, it's your turn.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, the pool failed, um, in twenty twenty and we needed to act. There was, it was, it had been Scotch taped together for a long time. We had been discussing a new pool for at least thirty years. Our, um, architect is from Piedmont and he is a local treasurer and we were lucky to get him. We, um, we had widespread community support for a new pool. It was the first bond measure that Piedmont had ever put on the ballot and it passed by just under seventy percent. So that was a super, super majority. As a result, we, we earned an A A A rating that allowed us to sell bonds at a favorable rate. So we made another, uh, from nineteen million point five on the bond, we got up to about twenty-four point five. You're correct, the PRFO has been very generous in their fundraising and added another two point one million, um, forth, towards the pool. But also we were able to move money from the facilities capital fund of about three point two million dollars. So in effect, we did have, um, a place to go for that, that overage. Now, what caused the overage? That was hit upon too. We had removed two buried fuel tanks and a lot of contaminated soil. We had bad weather. There was a lot of flooding. And we've also had to wait for, for essential, um, services like East Bay mud and PG&E to come in and hook us up so we can continue with our work. The bond oversight committee has been very vigilant in reviewing expenditures and we will be complete in the spring of twenty twenty-five to everyone's.
Well, end with you there. All righty, uh, question number five. What are your views on expanding commercial activity in Piedmont? And Laurel Pemlee, you get to begin this one.
Thank you for this question. So Piedmont has a very, uh, small inventory of commercial space. So we're relatively restricted in what we can do commercially in Piedmont. There was recently a community survey that went out to all of our residents, asking for input on what they would like to see in the, the community in our commercial space. One of the top things that people were interested in was a community gathering space, uh, that was not part of a city building. Like we have a lot of community gathering spaces, but you have to rent them. So this would be more like a, uh, cafe or something of, of, um, that sort. And, um, it was also very clear from the survey responses that people were not looking for, uh, things like liquor stores or, um, other things that might draw, uh, crowds into, into Piedmont. And I think the spaces that we have, um, need to be prioritized from a sense of what the community does want to have, providing us commercial, um, commercial opportunities, things like a gathering space, tutors, things that really serve our community's needs.
Connor McCarthy, you are next.
Thank you. Um, yes, we did a survey. Thank you for looking at that. And we, we actually have less than ten commercial businesses in Piedmont. Many of them are banks or real estate offices. Of course, the jewel of our community is Mulberry's Market. Laurel is correct. The, uh, survey showed a dislike for liquor stores within our boundaries, but a propensity to want cafes. So we're a community that wants gathering spaces. That's the, the seventy percent, um, approval of the pool. It's a community resource. We love our parks. We love our community gathering spaces. So we actually just approved a new business that moved in on Grand Avenue next to the Ace Hardware Store that is a spa-like, um, massage and facial spot that we welcomed into Piedmont. But I think letting folks know that they're welcome and wanted and what services are welcome and wanted is a step in the right direction. And that survey did give us a lot of information. So to the extent we can incentivize and make people feel welcome and, and coming in, I think we need to do that. Thank you. Under my one point five.
James Green, it's your turn.
Thanks Kathleen. Um, really good question. I think maybe I could tie it back to the earlier question on public safety. I think, uh, what the residents would like is somewhere that they can walk to or bike to, or maybe take a quick drive to, that is a safe space that builds that sense of community that Connor was talking about. That is like a pool, but maybe it's a cafe or a pizzeria or something like that. At a time when, um, other farther flung commercial, uh, strips are a little bit uncertain, maybe a little bit unsafe and people aren't sure that they want to go there. So, uh, I think the, uh, uh, opportunity when, um, as my understanding is the gas station in the middle of town, at some point in the next couple of years, those, those tanks will expire and have to be dug up. So the opportunity to think about making the, uh, center of town a little bit more commercial. They're already zoned for commercial, but a little bit more commercial, um, would I think be something that the citizens would support as the, um, survey that Connor and Laurel mentioned. And also one that hopefully we can welcome businesses that want to be there and, uh, uh, like Mulberry's be an attraction for current residents and, and new residents who are part of the community and weave that fabric together.
Uh, let's go to question number six. As in all communities, climate change is having an impact. For example, many Piedmont homeowners are being denied fire insurance, uh, and, or, and/or are facing spiraling costs. More broadly, what can the city do to help alleviate the effects of climate change? And the person who would start with this one is Connor McCarthy.
Thank you. Um, well, I can tell you from firsthand experience, my husband and I were denied our homeowner's policy. It expired, uh, August thirty-first and we were scrambling, um, to replace it. I will say that there are, it's, the prices are now exorbitant. We were offered something that was triple what we were already paying. The state has some insurance they're offering, but it's limited. So you would need to get a, an umbrella policy, which is the route we took. Going back, I think that climate, so many things we could do for climate, many priorities, but limited capacity. So the elect, as going back to the electrification of buildings, um, the emergency vehicles electrification, uh, the California green standards for new construction are much better than the construction in my home, which is a hundred years old this year. So, you know, we, we encourage, we incentivize when people come to the counter at planning. We let them know what the options are and we hope to encourage them in the right direction. As far as getting insurance, um, I, I would, my personal recommendation would be, you know, look at this, look at what the state is offering now. There's a lot of, uh, insurance companies that are leaving California because of the fire hazard.
James, you are next.
Wonderful. Thanks. Yeah, I, I think, um, for a lot of residents, their home is their, kind of one of their primary investments and protecting it is super important. Uh, as Connor said, um, California is challenged across a range of different, uh, insurance, um, markets, including fire insurance. The, 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 the exciting part of course about, or the, the great part about living in Piedmont is that we have our own fire department and they're incredibly responsive and we're just so fortunate to have that and something that the citizens, uh, welcome. And then hopefully very rare instance in which they need to call upon the fire department. But more broadly on the climate change, I, I think, uh, Laurel pointed out the, um, the awards that the city gave out for climate, uh, action. And I think Piedmont can be a leader for other small towns in climate, whether or not it's electrification or solar panels or, uh, increased electric vehicles, walking and biking. It's something that we don't have two square miles. We don't have a huge impact for California or for the whole world. But it's something that I think for the residents of Piedmont really resonates with them and something they really want to show to others in the county and for others in the state that even though we're, we're not a huge footprint, we are trying to do our best to limit our, uh, use and emissions of greenhouse gases to benefit our children and our grandchildren.
Laurel Pemlee, you have the last word.
Thank you. So, um, I think the effects of, of climate change, both Connor and James touched on it. One of the biggest effects right now is our increased wildfire season. You know, we also experience floods when we have large, uh, swaths of drought, uh, large periods of drought. You, we're more pr- prone to flooding. And somewhat unrelated to climate is also the risk that we've always faced of earthquakes. And all of these threats are, um, we can respond to them, but we can also mitigate them. And I know our fire department now is, is working on, uh, mitigation steps to study what the threats are and what we can do as a community to make sure that we are, are poised to suffer as little as possible when, uh, uh, natural disaster occurs. Another thing that I think is really important there is the communication, uh, of the city with our residents. So like a, a lot of what we've talked about already, um, the burden lies on our residents to take action. But oftentimes it can be difficult to know what to do. And if our city steps up its communication and continues to provide information about what individuals can do to say shore up their homes against fire, I think that's a very important service to provide.
Right. This is our last question. And I think this is one you all appreciate. In your opinion, what are the best ways that Piedmont can foster community? So that everyone feels included. And James, you begin this round.
Wow, well, uh, having the candidates debate, thanks to lead women voters is a great way to form community. So thank, thanks for having me answer that last question. I think we touched upon some of it today. Some of it is, um, through the schools. Some of it is, um, through the activities of Piedmont Rec, which are just wonderful. Everything from schoolmates to, uh, o- older folks, uh, being able to dance in the community hall. Some of it is the use, uh, the judicious use of the fields that we have, which are, um, uh, popular for both sports and, uh, traditional, uh, pickup games, uh, whether or not it's, um, pickleball or something else. I think all of those things help form community. We, we touched on, I think, this real demand for some retail that would be, uh, cafe or pizzeria or something else like that. I also think that the city is just so blessed with having so many different, uh, foundations and volunteers and committees that help guide the decision-making of the city council and the city leaders so that there's input from, uh, across, um, across the residents, so that people feel like they're coming together. I, I really love the, uh, Jen's State, State of the City and that effort to just kind of communicate with the citizens and the residents as to what's going on and as an opportunity to kind of celebrate what it is that the city is doing and where the city is going.
Next would be Laurel Pemlee.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great question. So one of my main priorities, uh, is community engagement. And to me, this means providing numerous diverse avenues of communication and partnering with all of the community organizations and groups that make Piedmont the wonderful community that it is. This fosters collaboration and shared ideas. One of the things that I really would like to do if elected is to hold regular town halls for residents. This is something that I've done with, uh, the leadership roles that I've had with the League of Women Voters and, uh, statewide, um, and also across the country. These meetings are a space for people to come together and voice their concerns. And they're also a catalyst for creating new solutions and ways to work together. I really enjoy bringing existing groups together to collaborate and share ideas. I think that can be really magical and can bring us all as a community beyond where we would go if we were, were just staying in our individual little bubbles. And I think Piedmont is, uh, really a special pa- place with the amount of community engagement that we already have. We already have such an active rec department and so many community groups that people already take advantage of. So more of the same.
Connor McCarthy, it's your turn.
Thank, thank you so much. I heard you use the word, um, the, the phrase welcoming, make Piedmont more welcoming community. And I think that's something that this city council really has a lens on. We have a, a, um, a jacket of being, we are statistically the most segregated city in Alameda County. We don't see ourselves as unwelcoming, but others do. So we need to proactively do things to less, lessen that stereotype. We need to acknowledge our history and we need to make corrections going forward. One of the most important things we're doing, I think that'll have the most positive impact to show us as a welcoming and inclusive community is our housing, how we deal with our housing. On a more, more positive and immediate note, we have a wonderful food fest that just had its third year and welcomed three thousand people from across the region. We do our Fourth of July parade, which welcomes people from well beyond Piedmont. Our Harvest Festival, our Movies in the Park, our Play Like a Girl event welcomes people of all ages and abilities. So I think we're on the right track and we're doing a good job.
Well, that concludes our round of questions. Now it's your turn to have what we call the closing statements. This is one minute and we will do it in reverse order of how we started, which means that Laurel Pemlee will start first, then James Green and then Connor McCarthy. So Laurel Pemlee, do you have the stage?
Thank you so much. So I used to think that other people had the whole democracy thing covered, uh, but after twenty sixteen, I realized that I had two choices. I could complain about things that I had zero agency to change or I could identify issues and be part of the solution and I chose to be part of the solution. To me, this means serving my community with my expertise, with sound data-driven decisions and working to create a welcoming environment for all of our residents. It also means being anti-racist. It means supporting our LGBTQ neighbors. It means having zero tolerance for antisemitism and it means championing women and girls. I've been endorsed by the entire current city council, four of the five so far, uh, current school board members and numerous former elected officials. If elected, I will apply my proven record of service to proactively address the issues that we face as a community. You can learn more at laurelplumier.com and I would be honored to have your vote.
James?
Thank you Kathleen. Uh, like a lot of families, we moved here for the school system. And my kid's a seventh grader at, at Piedmont Middle School and is thriving and has, uh, a wonderful group of friends and has found community here. For me, uh, I, I'm running for city council because I know how government works from the inside out. Working for thirty years, both in the federal government and in government affairs across a, a range of different companies and organizations, from Google, my current employer, to Mattel Albright's consulting firm in Washington DC. I've run a government office with personnel and a budget. I've had a chance to lead on these really challenging policy issues from climate change to technology standards. And I've had to work with a wide range of public and private stakeholders across the world and across the aisle. I've had to work in very challenging administrations and representing the people of Piedmont would be for me, an honor and a privilege. Thanks very much to you Kathleen and thanks for the other candidates.
Connor McCarthy, you have-
Thank you so much. During the four years I served as a member of council, I have consistently brought stakeholders into meetings with staff leadership to clarify information and inform on topics in an attempt to reach a mutual understanding. I know from firsthand experience, actually from a lifetime of experience, that not all opponents are wrong and not all experts are right. I make fiscal decisions from a personal understanding of the hard work and sacrifice required to make the economic investment to live in Piedmont. I support Piedmont's climate goals and work to ensure Piedmont does its part to protect the earth's climate. I want safe streets. I support a highly trained police officers who work to maintain public safety while protecting all persons' civil rights. I support a highly trained fire department. Overall, I will continue to work to make Piedmont the place where our children want to raise their own families and where newcomers from diverse backgrounds know they are welcome and wanted. You are all invited to review my website, connormcarty.org and I humbly ask for your vote on November 5th. Thank you so much.
Alright. Thank you very much. Thank you to your candidates and for stepping up and making democracy work. And thank you to our audience and your interest in making informed choices. Your local leagues also participate in 411 and online collection of candidates information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms and positions there. That web address is vote411.org, which you see on your screen. If there are questions you wish answered, contact these candidates directly for your insights and positions. Your local leagues may also be hosting additional forums for area candidates who will be on your ballot. You can find information about upcoming forums and how to attend, how to submit questions in advance on their websites. You can also access recordings of previous LWBP forums on the LWBP voter YouTube channel. This forum, remember, is also being recorded by KCOM. It will be available on the city's website at piedmont.ca.gov/meetingvideos. So the next step is up to you. If you haven't registered yet, you can still register to vote online through October 21st, 2024 at 5:00 PM, by 5:00 PM. But remember, same day registration is available in person through Election Day, November 5th, 2024. Ballots will begin to be mailed out starting October 7th. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box located in Piedmont at Highland Way and Mountain Avenue. Please remember to cast your vote on or before Election Day, November 5th. Encourage your family, friends and neighbors to vote. Now a words from the sponsor of the league. Members of the League of the Women Voters do the hands-on work to defend democracy and empower voters. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. If you would like to be involved with the women in making democracy work for everyone, it's easy to join the league. So follow up. Thank you. This officially ends our Piedmont City Council Candidate Panel.